Okay, good morning, everyone. It's eight thirty-two on Tuesday, October fourth, two thousand twenty-two. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectment of the Town in New Canaan. Uh, this is a hybrid meeting. We have no members of the public here in person. Other members of the public, uh, by Zoom. You before we start, I want to ask to amend the agenda. We have two items to 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 add. Um, one is a full-time hire as you have on your sheet in front of you. And secondly, we need park lot approval request from public works to it. This is the wave any parking lot where the ice cream will go. So I move we add these two items to the agenda.
Second.
All favor. I okay. Uh, first item on the agenda is the minutes of the last meeting on September twenty. Any comments or corrections? I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
All favor. I public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectment and agenda topic scheduled for review and or vote comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address, B O S distribution at new can the C T dot gov, and we will read them before the end of the meeting. Are there anybody? Any members of the public on by Zoom? Or oh, if we only take come up by email. Seeing none and seeing no one in the room. We'll move on to, uh, I guess that's why Row is here. I didn't know. Suspense report for uncollectible taxes. Good morning, Roseanne. How are you?
I made my annual request.
Yeah.
Tax collector's office would like to request that we take the grand list of two thousand and fourteen motor vehicle and supplementals for a total of ten thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifteen cents and move it to suspense along with the grand list of two thousand and eighteen personal property of four thousand one hundred and three dollars and forty-six cents.
How about real property?
Don't suspend on real property. It's leaned.
Right, it's leaned. Okay.
They can't touch that.
How does this number compare with?
It's actually getting better.
Really?
We we use other things now, and the D M B has gone to a new system in the last couple of years, so they're able to hold off registrations or new registrations for anyone who hasn't paid local taxes.
Any local taxes or just motor vehicle?
No.
Just motor vehicle taxes. Yeah. Chris, and thank you for this. Can you just remind me that twenty fourteen? And so are we? So we'll you'll come again. It'll be twenty fifteen, et cetera, right? Okay, and and what's the just the reason for the number of years in between?
We just choose years that we feel we've done everything we can. Don't forget, we have to by law still continue to collect these.
Right.
We're putting them in a suspense file. They're still with the collection agency.
Okay.
So they'll still keep working on the file, and we still do get some collection.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I move we approve the request from the tax collector to transfer uncollectible taxes as described by Roseanne to the suspense tax book in the total amount of fourteen thousand six sixty-nine point six one. Second.
Back in here.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Thanks.
Enemis, thank you, Roseanne. Cybersecurity, Mr. Kaiser, he's back from a little hiatus with COVID. Everyone's kind of
Oh, dear.
Fighting COVID now and then, but you look.
All the pool kids are getting it. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you want to read it, you want me to another one? The Cisco Smart Net will start there.
This is not the this is not funded by the or is it? It's fun. A couple are yeah, by the ARPA funds.
And renewal at the same time.
Okay, good.
Uh, first one is not. That's the annual smart net. That's for the voice and uh, and messaging system that the land uses, so the phone system and all. This is the first year we actually were we're um, had an option to do a lock, which is actually pretty nice because Cisco has been going up. And then between ten and fifteen to seventeen percent. Um, our budget was right around sixty-three thousand dollars. The annual they came in were sixty-one, but over the three years and the town attorney looked at this so that um, it will be writ uh, written in the contract that if the budget is approved, then we can go forward just like the only good. Um, and it's the savings of almost thirty thousand dollars or a little more than thirty thousand over the next three years.
Yeah, so that's great. That's great.
And we're not, we don't foresee changing the phone systems through here, so. Um, second one is a backup solution, C D W G. Uh, they're the the government entity of C D W. So they give us best price. It's for our aging archive backup solution that does all of the imaging by as town hall. And with this, we're hoping that with the Board of Ed as well, we can turn this into actually a redundancy for both the the town side and the board of Ed's side. So we'll work with that with that as well. Uh, this is necessary anyway for us.
So the Board of Ed is okay with that?
Yep, yep. We talked with them that that with that particular piece and another piece in cybersecurity world.
Good.
We'll bring you later on, but yeah, we're gonna try to do a lot more synergy between the two.
So this amount will cover both the town and the Board of Ed, or do you have to do an additional subscription?
Covers our side and then and and a it's like a tertiary, if you will. So there's a redundancy in case whatever we have now breaks, it will actually take over. And if it's uh, built large enough, which we've got the quote for, we should be able to to bring both.
Handle both. Okay.
Yep. Uh, Bit Defender, that's uh, that's our um, endpoint security on all the devices, and that does all the automated updates and patching, which means we don't have to sit there and reboot devices on a weekly basis. It does it on a daily, weekly. Uh, all the Microsoft patching, all of the security patching that we have to stay current with. And um, finally, it's no before. That's the training that we started to use as a joint venture between H R and I T. Uh, we want to continue with them. They've come down. Uh, I think their first initial quote was around fourteen change. We looked at two other businesses that do this as well, uh, and and did trials with them so that they actually came down and met their twelve thousand which uh, whichever was our lowest of the other one as well. And that'll take us out for three years, which we have to stay current with with our cybersecurity insurance.
And which of these four are under ARPA?
C D W G and Noble Four. The first and the third.
Remind me how much we provided I T for ARPA?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty. And you remarked the the balance for?
Yeah, that's the other cyber issue we're gonna go with and try to
By the way, thank you for setting him up with a new uh, keypad keyboard yesterday.
Questions for Chris?
No more.
No more questions? Okay, I move to reapprove the request from I T, uh, Director, Mr. Kaiser, to enter to the contracts as he described. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Tiger. Morning, Mr. Rogers.
Good morning. Uh, Jim is down at the wastewater plant this morning. They're replacing um, the first of our clarifiers. So he wanted to be there since they'll be setting the the equipment today. So it's very important operation. He wanted to be down there. Uh, so what we have is, uh, we went out to bid for the replacement of the fence. This uh, this fence line is uh, along the property line between the wastewater plant or should say our D P W facility wastewater highway transfer station and the cemetery itself. Uh, it was a wood fence that was placed back when the plant was refurbished back in nineteen ninety-eight. We're looking for a complete replacement of it with a chain link fence. Uh, we got went out, got nine bids. The low bid was A Z Services out of Newington, Connecticut, uh, for an amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred. We added a contingency of fifteen percent for three thousand two hundred and twenty-five hours for a total of twenty-four seven twenty-five. Uh, should be noted that Mo spoke to uh, Paul Passero from uh, Pete Passero from uh, the uh, cemetery, and they don't have any concern with being an eight-foot uh, black chain link fence. We're changing from a wood fence to a chain link fence. The majority of it already is chain length. It's just the stretch was not.
Thank Tiger. Does this have anything to do with the breach of security that we had before?
No. They they, you know, I mean, someone could climb a fence regardless. I don't think they could climb this portion of the fence. You know, there are other gaps or uh, you know, areas where it was uh, just being left open at times at night. It did uh, approve a contract for our gate installation or gates.
Right.
Still, so and then being processed, uh, being commissioned.
And that's how we came in?
Think that's the way it came in. Yeah.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the cemetery doesn't mind looking at a wastewater treatment plant?
I don't know if they can necessarily see it. There's a lot of screening in front of it. But their guests don't seem to mind.
It's a beautiful. There's what? Oh, this this great this vegetation screening. Because there's a stock eight fence there now, right?
That's the place. Yeah, that's that cedar fence.
Is this is this in the budget?
It's in the budget. Yeah, it's a substantial savings from the cedar.
Right.
We looked at three separate. We looked at a cedar. We looked at a, say, a vinyl, like a white vinyl, or then a chain link fence. Chain link fence was the least expensive, obviously, and and since the cemetery didn't have any concerns, nor did we.
Who with the cemetery?
Who's the cemetery most?
Is he the?
He's he's right. He's he was probably key replacement.
Let's just check with Bailey Stewart, the the head of the sure cemetery boards. Make we don't have any belated regrets about looking at the.
So from the highway department out to the transfer station, there is chain chain defense, which is put in when it gets down to was. And where the where the fence is now is the is where the roadway and mark is, the cemetery is not in the sea.
Okay, well, again, I asked Pete to check with his his board, so. Otherwise, I think we ought to approve this. So I move we approve the request from Public Works. Uh, is this coming out of the major maintenance or is this coming out of public works?
It's coming out of the wastewater plant itself. It's mandatory for the plant. You can imagine it's a series of pools, right?
Yeah, right. So safety.
Right.
Um, with A Z Services for black eight-foot chain link fence as described by Tiger for a total cost with contingency of twenty-four thousand seven twenty-five. Second?
Second.
Further discussion?
None here.
All favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger. Next item is the library construction loan agreements, which have been in. I think we may have approved these once already back in July or something and uh, but the library attorney uh, asked for a few minor changes and um, really just clarification. So the uh, Board of Finance representatives are fine with these, and I'm fine with these, and we're just moving this on to uh, for approval by the Board of Finance. Um, they have to fund it by a special appropriation and either bond resolution or special appropriation for the general fund, but they'll decide that. And then to the town council. Any questions about the documents?
Sure. Um, so I think the last time we saw it was it was seven million, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the one. Yeah.
That's a big. You buried the lead. And um, and so it's just curious, is so previously it was seven million. Was the the increase because of a change in the costs or because a delay in the pledges received or both?
Uh, my understanding from Tom Tellus, who's leaving the library board is treasurer. Uh, that um, they're nervous about the uh, economy and the stock market, and therefore the uh, expectation to pledge will commit as
we receive.
So it's it's receipt of pledges that they want to provide, you know, but remember, we started out at thirteen million dollars, uh, which was one-third of the project cost. I understand they're doing very well with their fundraising, but they are pledges as opposed to uh, cash payments. So they're giving an updated cash flow statement. Have you received that?
Yeah, has has it been a diminution in the expectation of the timing of money's coming in pursuant to pledges? Guess my question.
You know.
I guess he answers. Yes, that's why they're asking.
That's I I think the Board of Finance will spend a lot more time on this than than we need to because they will want to know the justification for going back up. I I would have expected them based upon a couple months ago uh, that we're going down from seven, not up from seven, but. Yeah. Again, there's a cash flow statement that um, is being revised, and the Board of Finance will have that before they authorize their this facility for funding.
Just a couple of questions on that along those lines. Um, is the library year end um, the same as the towns or is that? Okay. And and it does say that um, I guess ten days before quarter end, they'll give you the cash flow statement. So are we expecting, are they gonna do a draw on the loan this quarter, fourth quarter? Oh, okay.
That that honestly doesn't make a lot of sense to me because I would have thought they originally predicted they were gonna be started drawing in October. Now they're then December, now they're out in February, so.
It was February, March because they were having, you know.
That's what was my understanding that it was it was next year.
Yeah.
First.
They were gonna draw down all of next year based on what when they thought those pledges were gonna come in. The highest point was without their contingency, they had a million contingency. The highest point of the draw would have been about five, four point nine million dollars. Um, but that's based on them using that um, money first coming in from the donations. So if they don't come in, the draw is higher.
Okay, okay. Um, and just on the legacy building, which is mentioned here, is is that um, it says, obviously, this does not include the move of the legacy, right, right, okay. Has that been brought before the uh, P N C yet in terms of the final?
No.
Okay, so sometime perhaps this quarter, fourth quarter?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then um, just uh, let's see, the only other questions I had was there's a, sorry.
She actually raises.
I beg pardon? I read it too. I actually read it. I I do read everything. Well, I and and you probably read this too. Schedule B actually still says seven million. This page fifteen of sixteen, it's the uh, form of requisition certificate. Uh, it says the amount of the requested advance does not exceed the seven million dollars, so that needs amendment. And then um, one last thing, and this is for you. The investment, we're considering this. This is a loan from the general account, so it's not part of the investment policy. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I beg your pardon?
And that's why it's gonna go for an authorization versus just a regular investment.
No, but it's consistent with the investment policy if we decide to make the loans directly.
It the
It requires authorization.
It requires authorization. The latest um, policy that I saw on the on the investment um, does not specifically say about loaning out. Um, it used to. Uh, it's very generic.
Right, okay. Because that would, I mean, it I thought it was pretty specific about um, it has to be double A and above and and that kind of thing in terms of the investment policy, but that's dated. Maybe that has changed.
It it has. There's been three versions that I've found.
Okay, yeah, okay. So just I guess when I look at the interest rate, um, it's the cure, the current muni rate plus twenty-five uh, basis points. And I just thought just a quick, quick question for you. Why is the rate determined based on the town's borrowing costs rather than on an investment opportunity? So the difference being?
If we went to bond for this.
That's what the that's what the M O U said.
Not a tax exempt note.
Yes.
So um, that would be, you know, a cost to us um, in going out further if they pay it off sooner.
Right.
With our land. So the thought process was would be that would be our cost. They get the benefit of that tax exempt rate that's lower um, than if they had to borrow themselves.
So the opportunity cost, if you will, of taking that five million dollars and as part of the general fund and investing it in, let's say, a security opport- opportunity, double A or what have you, that's about for four and a half percent versus getting three, three and a quarter, I would assume.
When the M O U was negotiating, the contemplation was we would bond it with short-term notes, and I I think now that.
So it's just a pass through of the cost.
It's a pass through the cost. The short answer is that's what the M O U provides. We have, we can't.
Got it. We weren't trying to make money on it.
Right.
Which is a pastor that 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 was. Setting that aside.
This is how much it would cost us, plus, you know, the fees of clothing.
Sure.
So that's why the point.
The twenty. Have we done other loans at all from the general fund?
Not that I'm aware.
No.
No, there's nothing on the balance sheet.
And so and but the investment policy obviously permits that making a loan from the general fund.
The investment policy had a statement in that that said you could loan out within the um, the town.
Yeah.
Um, for businesses, things like that. It wasn't. It wasn't very specific.
With it, you know, okay, within the town, the borders of the town or the?
Or New Canaan.
Okay.
For businesses.
And that was removed.
That was taken out, and then it was made just a generic uh, investment policy. If you were going out, what type of funds you could invest in? Um, but we're we weren't looking at this as investment versus a promissory note, and that's why we were going down through the making sure the authorization was in place.
Okay, I had no further questions. Thank you. I just I I have read through the uh, the changes. There's not many, but I am a bit concerned that, you know, we're going up. We came down from thirteen million to seven, and now we're going up again, and I just have some concerns, but I'm sure.
And just the fact that they have until twenty thirty-two, I think, ten years to to actually
Right.
Interest as we're doing it. Um, they're just concerned because of the current state of the market.
Right, yeah, we all are, so. That's actually just a follow-up on that. So is the interest paid from general operating income or is that paid as part of their collections and pledges?
You don't remember which way. There's a, if I remember in the agreement, they the the money is going into the pledge account. Once uh, right now, up until the point of they haven't done any draws on it, the pledge account is under their control. Once they start doing the drawdown, the pledge account, I wouldn't say the town has the control on it, but as those pledges are going into that account, the town has the right to those pledges because of us having that outstanding.
Yeah, my I thought it was the latter um, of the two that you said, because, you know, obviously, we fund operating expenses. I know. As a town, so it's kind of like a week.
Are you saying compared to the money that we send them on the uh, annual basis?
No, the question is whether or not they're obligated to raise money privately in order to pay the interest as well as the principal.
That's it. That's it. So so it's both the principal and interest. Okay, out of that pledge account. Okay, okay. Pulling it out of money that we give. That's my question.
Yeah. No, it's purely on their pledges.
Okay, great. Thank you. Perfect. Thanks.
Any further?
None here.
I move we approve the request from me to approve the construction loan agreement. I'm sorry, note and related uh, loan documents for the New Canaan Library Loan construction loan facility. Second.
Second here.
Further discussion? All favor? I that's unanimous. Truck purchase. Mr. Howe. Hey, Lowboy.
Lowboy. So what a lowboy is is a small dump truck. This is a crew cab, small dump truck that we use in park maintenance. So if you're replacing a twenty thirteen lowboy crew cab. Unfortunately, with the the ordering time, it's gonna take about a year for us to get it. So with that said, that's why we had to put a contingency in for the accessories only. Um, Chevy and Carl, Carl Chevrolet Chevrolet will hold the price when we order it, but the accessories, the body and things like that will not, they won't hold it. So we put in a fifteen percent contingency. My estimate right now is will probably be around a three percent need of that money, but we don't know what's gonna happen a year from now when the body needs to come in and the lighting package.
Any reason to purchase the plow, for instance, in advance and let it wait?
That was my first thought.
Yeah.
Problem is, there could be changes. We're not exactly sure what the model's gonna be like. So if we purchased, like, the body is the big part of that and the plow, we might have to then purchase different things. So.
And this is this is supply chain.
Supply chain issues. Yep. So.
So you you've got a fifteen percent contingency, but you're thinking it's gonna be.
I think it's gonna be much less.
Less, okay. And this is in the budget.
It's in the budget, and even if we had to use the whole fifteen percent contingency, it's it's still um, like six thousand dollars less than the budget.
Good. Are they holding on the trade-in price too?
They're gonna hold the trade-in price as we use it for another year.
Yeah.
So.
That's good.
Yep, very good.
But it doesn't get into an accident.
Knock on some water, it's something.
Any questions?
Nope.
I move we approve the request from Parks Department to purchase a twenty twenty-three lowboy crew cab truck with the accessories as described by John Howe, for which includes a contingency in case the price changes. Upon delivery. So second.
Second.
The discussion?
Not here.
All favor? That's unanimous. Cedar. Field cedar.
Field cedar. Um, over the last few years, we've been trying to seed our athletic fields more and more, and what this lot, well, this cedar will allow us to do, and this was in last year's budget. Um, supply chain issues, they weren't able to provide us with one. But the the nice part about this cedar is it will uh, be able to go over the sprinkler heads, so it saves a huge amount of time. I'm marking sprinkler heads and also, you know, so we'll be able to go out and hit the worn areas, you know, in some cases every couple of weeks, but we'll be able to seed all the fields efficiently instead of hiring an outside contractor to do the same work, so.
So we we've never had this before.
We've never had this. We've we've had cedars before.
But not.
And we still do, but not this one.
Right.
Yep. It goes very fast. We can we can get through through a lot of the seeding.
I mean, we've had a heck of a bad summer in terms of rain.
Yes, and we've we've airified and overseeded and had great luck so far because when the weather changed, it really changed for us.
Yeah, everything turned. Everything turned green.
Yep. So.
Any questions?
This one, how much savings do you think we're gonna get by having this ability to do it ourselves rather than outsource?
When we're we're looking at about fifteen hundred dollars a day um, when they come in to do it, so it could, it a little bit depends on, you know.
Ten, ten days of seeding.
Exactly, ten days very quickly, um, which we're gonna put into more seed, you know.
But the lifetime of this is.
Oh. I think minimum of ten years, but I think very easily we'll get fifteen to twenty out of it. Because even though we use it a lot, it's not like you're putting five thousand hours on it a year, so.
Is this something you push or is actually?
It's mounted on the back of a tractor on a three-point hitch, so it's towed behind it basically.
Okay.
So.
Good.
Yep. Yeah, we have, we have the tractors that can run it without any problem, so we're good to go.
But it doesn't turn. Says zero turn more, so it just goes straight. I'm kidding. This is a weird kind of a weird name. That's that's the next one.
I move we approve.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, guy. You know what? That that save that joke for the next one.
I move we approve a request from Parks Department to purchase a redexum speed seed twenty-one hundred from Pinch Turf Inc. For seventeen, for fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second here.
Second, all discussion, all in favor? I, it's unanimous.
Now we get to the zero.
The the um, zero turnmowers, we we have a fleet of six of them. They do a lot of the mowing around town, you know, anything from the schools, parks, like around Waviny House, big larger areas, they cut sixty-inch. Um, we get about ten years out of them. By the time we're done, like the one that we're getting rid of, we will be disposing of it. We will be.
Just just junk.
Junk. We will pull a few parts that we might be able to use on the new ones, but it it's going to the dump.
Right.
And nobody will be pulling it out of the dump for any use.
It's not gonna be the swap shop.
Not. This is not something I would wish anybody to take from the swap shop, that's for sure. So uh, so this this just is the the normal purchase, and this is in this year's budget.
Further questions?
None here.
I I love these names. I'm hopeful you approve the request. The Parks Department for a Hustler Super Z zero turn mower. From would would be farm.
How about second?
For eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Hey, second.
Second.
I can't make up the name.
All favor, I. It's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Who makes up these names? Super Z zero.
Hustler.
Hustler.
Let's get us back to business, Tiger.
Let's try. Ours, this one's a little bit more mundane. Uh so we we uh we went out to sale for um. Our annual sale for our comp, what's left over of our composted leaf mulch. We received one uh prospective bidder, Peter Lonnie Incorporated for. Nine dollars a cubic yard. We'll be looking to sell approximately seventeen hundred cubic yards for a total sale price of fifteen thousand three hundred. Uh to date, we've sold just over nineteen thousand cubic yards at an average unit price of eight ninety five. For a hundred and seventy six thousand six hundred dollars. Uh it's material that's not necessary for, you know, we we're saving stuff for our use and for residents for next year. But we need to clean out the uh the leaf mulch site for leaves that are going to fall momentarily.
What's our price this year versus last year?
Same price as last year, nine dollars a yard.
How can that be? Everybody's increasing pace by thirty percent. Shouldn't we charge thirty percent more?
Can't, we're asking the guy to take it. It's not, it's not a question that we'll sell it to you at ten dollars, because then we'll be stuck with it.
Like, how big is the mulch? Field, I mean, I know visually how how big.
Five acres.
Five acres, five acres. And and what are the restrictions on that pursuant to Waviny uh is is part of the Waviny Park?
Ask the witch doctor.
That's me. The site is was uh approved by the DEP. Our site was approved by the DEP. The the specific site itself has restrictions on it to the deed as far as horticultural recreation, things of that nature. That parcel that it sits on, that's why the leaf mulch site is sitting there because of horticultural purposes.
And that was the approval upon which. Be- because it's compost, it's horticultural, and that decision was made, how many, what's the history? I mean, I I.
Do you have personal knowledge of this or who told you this?
What? Fact that it was approved by the DEP?
Yeah.
We know it was approved by the DEP.
Yeah.
I was just thinking of the, I mean, I've been on board for twelve years, we just, you know, every year we sell the mulch, which is well, which is good and.
Yeah, well before my time.
Right.
And he said that it's the mulch out of the bays, it's transferred from the mulch, so that's where we're cleaning that out.
We should allow people to come down, and then it was a. A lot of problems along Lapham Road as far as people coming in and and taking more than their fair share. So uh during the previous administration, we we set aside a place for uh uh it up there, the. Transfer station outside of our salt area. So there's several bays there where people can come in and get it.
And is that where Lanny is picking up?
No, he'll get it from the.
He gets a suspension from the site, okay.
Yes, he asked, we won't truck it for him, we'll just load him there and I'll take it to his.
Okay.
No further questions?
Not here.
I move reprove the request from Public Works for the sale of composted leaf mulch, Lanny Construction Company for the same price as last year.
Second here.
Fifteen thousand three hundred dollars. All favor, hi.
Hi.
Thank you. The uh this next one is a partnership with the uh with the library. Um there's some sidewalks on Maple Street. That are not part of the library's construction project, but that should be done. Uh they haven't been done since, I would say, Center School. Uh parking lot was installed. Don't know, it's a concrete sidewalk with an asphalt overlay. So the library has to take care of the north side of Maple Street and a portion of the south side of Maple Street uh around the Center School. Uh entrance, the center parking lot entranceway. So the area from the entranceway down to Maple Street and from the entranceway up to Main Street uh to South Avenue. Is a town's responsibility and. After spending thirty plus million dollars, I think it would be in our best interest to have all the sidewalks look um the same. So we went to Dolling Construction, which is uh the site contractor for the library, asked them for a price. Their price was very close to what we would normally have paid. Um so we'd like to have one contractor on the site doing the work versus having. Our contractor working on both sides of uh of theirs, trying to work in conjunction, so. We'd like to approve a contract with Dolling Construction for thirty nine thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. We added a contingency of six thousand dollars for a total of forty five nine oh eight. To in essence, take care of the sidewalks on the south side of Maple Street from. Maine to South Avenue, uh not inclusive of what the library needs to.
So what, so they do the north side?
They're doing.
We do. We're part of the south side. How is it determined as to what part?
There's a, there's a sketch that was created uh as part of their document, their contract documents that were approved. As far as what their responsibility would be versus ours. So we're um in essence, taking a. There's only a couple of hundred feet around the center school lot area that they're responsible for, basically where the pedestrian crossing was. And where it will be.
Right.
For them. Um and then anything on the, you, let's call it the southeast corner and the southwest corner of Maple Street will be ours.
And then I know this is a bit unrelated, but um in in terms of the, Kevin, maybe you know this, the the planning for the redesign of the. Parking lot across the street from the library.
Well, that's done, right? They put in the new entrance drive, which is two two way.
Is that all it's going to be? I thought there was going to be more.
Only if they would, a year after the library opens, they have to do a study, a traffic study or a parking study.
Right, parking study.
To do a traffic and parking study, exactly, your your post development, post construction.
They do it.
They do it at their cost, and if we need to expand the lot, we will.
Yeah, we had several sketches that showed expansion possibilities of the lot itself.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a rabbit hole when you're, you know, going where it is now.
Correct.
So that'll that'll be in a year, a year after, when we get a better sense of the usage of that lot.
Right.
That's correct.
Good.
Any questions?
Just a a couple ones on the on the sidewalks, I assume they're going to be ADA compliant.
Yes.
Okay, for both south and main.
Yes.
Okay, and the uh you said concrete and asphalt, so what the current is, is it going to be all concrete then?
It'll be granite curb and concrete sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, to match.
So consistent with both sides.
Consistent with what we're doing uh throughout town, as far as since the sidewalks are adjacent to the roadway, we put a granite curb in and then a.
Granite curb, sharp granite curb or rounded.
Sharp as we could possibly find, no.
Having blown out a tire around there.
Be in this season, and uh I'm I'm certain that our plows, since we try to go to to the curb line, we'll we'll.
Right.
Dull those up.
Good.
And so it connects with the sidewalk that's south. And is there a sidewalk that being going that in that direction to south on main?
Sidewalks on all four corners.
All four corners, okay.
So you've got, you've got the one on South Avenue that.
Yeah, that, yeah.
And then Main Street each side, so it connects all the way through. There's connectivity all around the library as from from a sidewalk nature.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Where's Dolling Construction from?
Stratford.
We don't, we don't use them?
They haven't been on our projects, no, they've been in the area for quite a long time. They've been in business for a very long time. Um so I know of them, but we haven't worked with them.
Okay. I move reprove the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Dolling Construction as described by Tiger for a total of forty five nine oh eight to do partial. Sidewalk replacements on Maple Street. As described by Tiger, second.
Second.
For the discussion.
Not here.
All favor. Hi.
So this next item is a truck refurbishment. Moses here as well, in case you have any questions. For the highway department, we had uh truck number sixty two was a Vector truck. Um it's now reached beyond its useful life, not necessarily the chassis, but the body itself. So this was one that would come up and suck out a catch basin from from a front front position. The piping being in the front of it, the material would come up through the, through a hose into a into a hopper in the back, and that hopper. Basically, by the nature of itself, starts to eat itself alive, so we've we've refurbished it several times. Uh and now it's at the point where we should replace it, um replace the entire unit. But given the fact that the chassis is in great shape, um. We met with uh truck builders in Connecticut, they say they can remove the entire body of it and then replace it with a fourteen yard cubic. Uh cubic yard dump truck, which is something that we don't have, we don't have anything larger than an eight yard. And we've been looking at the possibility of a triaxle, which would hold up to twenty yards. Triaxles are inordinately expensive. And very difficult for someone to navigate some of our streets. So to give ourselves a little bit more flexibility as far as material hauling and and uh capabilities of that nature. Um we'd like to refurbish this truck, put it back into our fleet, and the cost would be thirty six thousand dollars. Um total added a four thousand dollar contingency for a total of forty thousand dollars. This would include um uh basically them salvaging the uh the unit itself. So they're giving us a credit for the salvage of the of the uh of the body.
Questions? And Mo, you should you should go up. Go and join us on this item.
How you doing?
I'm good. So is this as Tiger described?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a back truck and the whole back is. It's actually two uh two um trucks in one, because the back truck is probably the back, the back part of the actual vacuum is probably a hundred and. Hundred thousand dollars.
So the vacuum is, so the vacuum detaches when you don't want it, when you want to use just as a dump truck?
Yeah, so we're going to get rid of that.
Right.
Because that's a part that's just. We we probably have about forty five thousand dollars worth of repairs that we've done to it so far. So we'll get rid of that, and then we'll put a fourteen yard dump truck on the chassis. You gotta bring the wheels forward, shorten shorten the chassis up, but uh for thirty six thousand dollars, it seems like a pretty good deal, so.
Sounds like a good deal. Questions?
None.
Thanks for everything you do. As I like to say to Tiger, um. I move reapprove this request from uh Public Works to enter into a contract with Truck Builder of Connecticut. As described by Tiger for a total cost of forty thousand dollars for a. Truck number sixty two Vector Dump Truck.
Second here.
For the discussion, all favor, hi. Thank you, Mo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger.
I have one more.
One more tree warden.
Uh tree warden uh went out to bid for the pruning of the trees along South Avenue. This is what we spoke about, about the South Avenue relief project. Um so this is the area east and west um on South Avenue. From Cherry Street to Bank Street, uh we received two bids, Olmstead. Tree and Shrub Care was the low bid at nine thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. And we'd like to go forward with this portion of the work. Um Bob's working in conjunction with uh members of the Beautification League. And the state arborist on the actual relief project that was approved. Um selecting the the different materials, he's already had a couple of meetings with them, and then we'll be coming back at that time for a purchase.
Um this is a good time year to plant trees.
Yeah, time of the year to plant trees. I don't know if we'll get everything in this year. Uh mainly because we've got to come forward with our plan, give it to the state, they have to approve it. I've got to get an encroachment permit and then start to work. I don't see it. Happening before they close us down. Um so I see this as a spring project.
So this is art, this is part of the art.
This is part of our budget itself, this nine thousand dollars, but the funding I was talking.
And and and, you know, do thanks to the Beautification League for their. You know, assistance in the process.
Can we buy the trees of the nursery and let them sit and plant them next year?
We would have to maintain those trees for that amount of time. I think it would be better to let the nursery do it. You know, that way we're not responsible if if they uh they pass.
Delayed delivery.
You can necessarily look at a material stored on site, having them take care of it, yes, I can I can look at that that prospect um as well.
Anyway, this is not that, that this is the uh Elmstead tree for ninety one hundred and seventy dollars for. Removal pruning and stuff remove at various trees in town. Do I have a second?
Second.
For the discussion?
None.
All favor, hi. Thank you, Tiger.
Can I do the? Wave any?
Yes, the item we added, the wave any uh.
Okay, the uh this next item, thank you, by the way, for uh adding the uh to it, the uh the contractor wanted to take one last look at. And sharpen his pencil over the weekend, so I received this quote yesterday uh from FGB Construction for the. Uh Waviny Parking Lot, the large parking lot in the middle of Waviny that uh is adjacent to the softball field, soccer fields and the uh. The athletic um area itself, this would be to regrade the entire area. Basically, shorten it in certain areas and expand it in others. Um the overall square footage of of disturbed area would be reduced. But the usable area of pavement would be increased, if you if you uh, for lack of a better way to describe it. It's kind of seen in your picture, there's a green area where the parking lot right now is shaped as a kidney, right? So if we uh if we make it more into a rectangle um or an L, we actually are we're better utilizing the surface. And uh able to park more cars. So FGB came in with a price of a hundred and fifty eight thousand six seventy two twenty five. I added a contingency of twenty four thousand dollars for a total of one eighty two six seventy two twenty five. Um they're ready to come do this work now to get it ready for NC Rink to be able to put their rink up in early November. And then uh hopefully the weather will cooperate and we'll have skating and waving a park this winter.
Was this in the budget?
This is in the parking lot budget.
Parking lot budget, okay.
We had already planned on repaving this lot.
Yeah, I know, we had talked about that.
The rink needed a location, this came out to be a great location, we just couldn't get it done last year.
Right.
For them, so uh we said we would get it done this year for them.
Great. When when will this start?
Within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Then uh we'll shut the lot down for a little while, while they're while they're working on the grading and then. Uh pave it and then open it up for NC Rink.
And they'll still come out with it with their stone dust and put it over there and then take it up at the end of the season?
They'll have to do a little bit with stone dust, yet not as much as it was before, because we'll be we'll be uh correcting the grades and changing the grades down to a one percent cross slope. Which is what they would like to see, so at that point in time, there won't be as much. Last year, they had to put in a lot of material to get the get the ranked level.
Is is the, sorry, is the rink actually where you have the green, it's sort of in the elbow, if you will, of, is that where you're planning?
That it's to the north um in front of the uh in front of the bathrooms. So from the bathrooms heading to the right of the page to uh towards the east. Um is where the where the rink would be on that on the.
Okay.
If you look at it as a hockey stick, an inverted hockey stick, the blade of the hockey stick, it takes up a good portion of that parking lot, of that portion of the parking lot.
Okay, so the the new paved parking lot.
They do, it'll be on the new pavement, correct, and that area of green will will come back to green space. So we'll remove all the gravel and move out the millings and then uh top soil and seed it, so we'll actually get some additional green space back.
So before putting the rink on that space, did we add or? Keep the same number of parking spaces that we had before?
We're doing better than the number of spaces that we had before, just because the way it's uh. Way it's being laid out um in the fact that instead of being a kidney, it's now an L.
Right.
So we've got seventy one spaces planned at present.
Okay.
For the lot, there's about thirty eight in the blade and about thirty three on the uh. Um thirty one on the on the stick and then a couple of accessible spaces by the bathroom.
And so when we put the brink there, how many spaces is that?
It's about the thirty eight spaces on the blade.
It takes about thirty, okay.
Just for safety as well, to try to close off that portion of the lot, because you can imagine people will be walking around the rink, parents will be outside. So it would be better to uh close off the entrance from Waviny Drive. And allow that to just be the rink, and then the thirty plus spaces along the the stick portion along the soccer field will be uh will be available for parking.
And can you remind me along that soccer field, is there a uh fence there?
Guide rail.
There's a guide rail.
Yeah, we'll be looking to replace the guide rail uh on along both edges, both uh along the soccer field and then along the softball.
With with what?
Not as, with a wood rail.
Wood rail.
Yeah, very similar to what we have there now.
Right.
Yeah, we this, that's not part of this contract, we'll go out to uh uh railing contractors for that and ask them for a price. Wanted to get the grading done and make sure that everything was done, so then he would know where what height to set the posts and the rail at. Can't do it first.
That'll be, that'll be a visual upgrade as well, I think.
It will be a visual upgrade as well, correct.
Will the uh driveway on the north continue to be one way?
Drive when, yes, yes, we weren't looking to expand that at all. Uh the sightlines are a little bit tough as you, as if you wanted to exit exit through that area, so it's much better to have it just be a one way entrance. I think it's worked well to date.
Speaking of guardrails, what's happening on Elm Street? Is that fence going to be repaired? Street, Upper Elm, at the train station. It's all falling down.
I'm sorry, I apologize, the uh uh that's that portion of sidewalks out the bit right now, inclusive of the fencing and uh. Some work in the parklet, so that will all be replaced um probably with a split rail fence. Uh that we've utilized in other areas, but yeah, that'll that'll be coming out.
Before Thanksgiving.
We're hoping that the contractor, when we'll be bringing that to you next selectmen's meeting, we're hoping the contractor will take care of all that at that time.
Okay. Yeah, it looks odd, looks terrible, so.
Yep.
All of a sudden, I don't uh know for the questions, I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with FGB Construction. Um as part of their two thousand twenty two local road project uh budget. Is described by Tiger for a total project cost of one eighty two six seventy two twenty five, second. Is that correct?
Okay.
Includes a contingency of twenty four thousand. Um for the discussion.
None here.
All favor. That's unanimous. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you Tiger. That brings us back to, uh, the agenda at Financial Update with Josh Kaufman. That's why we have this sheet here. Is this final, final for June or? Nothing, nothing's ever final. Good morning, Josh and Anne. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Yeah. Um, so in front of you, you have a copy of the, um, the most up-to-date preliminary year-to-date financials for FY twenty two as of, it's really as of last paper. So, um, things are kind of constantly in motion as we're trying to make a push towards getting everything in for FY twenty two. Um, but it's, you know, it still comes in drips and drabs. So to finish things off. Um, so you, you'll see there's two pages, one for expenses, one for revenues. They're both kind of the same setup, having FY twenty one actuals. The approved revised and year-to-date numbers for FY twenty one twenty two, um, as well as kind of how it performed, um, dollar-wise, percent-wise. And FY twenty three's budget, just for reference, all the way on the, all the way on the right side. Um, so kind of to go over the, the main highlights of it. The approved budget per FY twenty two for expenses started at, um, one hundred fifty four point five million. Um, and ended with a year to, with actuals as one hundred fifty three point eight million. So it's at a ninety nine and a half percent, um, kind of budget performance. So we're coming up about, I think, according to this, it's seven hundred thousand under in terms of expenses, but I, I think we're really probably closer to on the mark or maybe by saving a few hundred thousand.
Probably a few hundred. We've got a little bit more entries that we are still adjusting for. I'm cleaning the balance sheet so that addressing some, uh, things. We have a couple more invoices that have gone in. Uh, and we're just checking for final accruals to make sure, um, everything is, you know, some of these has changed and, um, the board of ed that's going to change an additional, actually that one actually will change it to the good. There's an additional savings of sixty thousand for the board of another entry we need to make. Um, so on the board where it currently has two seventy one, that's, um, going to go up about sixty, sixty thousand dollars in savings. So we just, you know, we still have just these little, uh, final entries that need to get in.
And flipping over to the revenue side of things, um, it was expected or budgeted for a one hundred thirty nine million. Oh, sorry.
Can I just go back to Ash on to the expenditures on COVID? Um, pretty big delta there, right?
Uh, for the town COVID expenses?
Yeah.
So.
Some of those are related to the health department and it's just how they were coded in.
Right.
Uh, we've slowly started getting, uh, departments to not use those COVID accounts anymore. Because we're not technically in COVID.
According to the president, there is no COVID.
But they're, they're now operating expenses. These are ones that had been earlier in the year. They had been coded there, but we're getting, um, grants from the state to offset some of those. So it's just an accounting where they are with locally health department services.
Okay.
Are we getting a theme of reimbursements for some of that?
We do. You see that in the miscellaneous revenues. Miscellaneous revenue should have gone up because we did get some in. I'm wondering if it's.
COVID relief.
Probably falls under all other revenues on this.
And the, well, probably the COVID relief.
It says COVID relief. There's a.
They caught up with a couple of different, uh, years, uh, two years. They've, they've brought some, uh, we, they've called the revenue up for those, uh, prior years. And then, uh, Bill Osman had done, um, they changed the rules. So he applied right away and got some additional funds back.
Good. Thank you.
So while we're there, any other questions on the expenses side of things?
Yeah. Okay. So on the insurance liability, is that the health insurance for the town? And, and did we have that kind of a savings ninety eight thousand?
No, the help, that's, um, our general liability insurance.
Okay.
Um, separate from the medical insurance. That's further, um, let me see where.
That's up above health, the internal service transfer. Yeah.
So it's, you know, where the rates are coming in when you're first getting your rates from their, the carriers and then what actually does come in.
Okay. So it came in better than expected. Yeah. Okay. Great. And then just could just remind us on the, um, BOE piece. So they came in under budget by two point four million and then they had an additional health internal service transfer.
Yes. So two point four was their operational savings. They're, uh, out of the two point four, they're taking the one point five and sending it to their internal service funds, um, reserves.
And is that appropriate? In your opinion?
It depends on how you look at it.
Then isn't the audit committee looking at?
They meet Thursday.
They are looking at it. The, the fund, uh, per our policy, they have to have forty percent of their, um, their corridor. Um, right now, without this, they would have been short three hundred thousand on their corridor. Um, what the Board of Ed believes is that in the budget season, when the one point three was reduced out of their budget from the ISF fund, going from the general fund to the internal service fund, they believe they need to fund that back. So they're taking some of their savings and putting that one point three we cut out of the budget and putting the three, the three hundred thousand, which is the deficit for the corridor, back over to the internal service.
They get back to forty percent.
No, 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 they, they need three hundred thousand to get to the forty percent.
That's it.
That's it. But we cut their budget or their budget was cut, their medical budget was cut by one point three is last budget season.
Right.
They feel they need to put that money back in their savings.
So it's a combination of the both, the coverage of the corridor and then the one point that what's, yeah, okay.
They, they, they needed three hundred for the corridor. The five eighty one, um, that's an encumbrance that under budgetary basis, uh, you can make at the end of the year. So it, it is to a particular vendor, but it's not that you have a particular expense. It's not that you know you have this. It's so, let's say if we, um, I'm trying to think what, what are the vendors? They had a, they put it under equipment. I don't know the vendor, but they put it on their equipment line where they expense it in twenty two to a vendor. So it's encumbered under a purchase order. And then it's, it's in expensed in twenty two. And then when they spend it in twenty three, it's a balance sheet. So it doesn't affect the P and L in twenty three.
And how is that number derived based on understanding that you're not?
Seen the breakdown. So it's whatever vendors they've chosen or whatever projects or whatever they felt they needed to, uh, e- expend this funds on or encumber these funds on, um, it could be.
And that's appropriate to this line item.
From budgetary basis, it is allowable.
Did you guys do that in Wilton?
Yes.
Did, okay.
Most board of ads will do in conferences. Towns don't do it too much. Town side.
Spending next year's.
I would think that'd be, did you ask to see it and didn't get the chance?
We got, we just got the numbers because we're trying to get the numbers in. So I don't have the listing, but we'll get, we have to get the list in for the audit.
Yeah, okay. So they'll see the, yeah, okay. Great. Thank you. Oh, the only other comment I, question I had on the non-wage contingency. So does this add up all the, for instance, the contingencies that we put forward on, you know, buying a truck or what have you? This is, uh, um, maybe the fifth or sixth line from the bottom. And so we set up a contingency pool of three hundred thousand. We revised it down to forty eight. And we used up twenty. Is that what that is for? All the contingencies for?
Yeah. So when we have something that we need a contingency for, we do a budget transfer out of it and into, um,
Oh, I see.
That we need.
Got it.
So we had a lot of, um, uh, facility type ones that we needed this year with the custodians, um. And, and we did a, a larger one. I want to say a hundred and eighty thousand at one time, uh, earlier this year.
Okay.
For different things that came up from all the different buildings.
Okay.
Like energy, like energy.
Energy, uh, um, two twenty, different things that came up. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's all I had on expenditures.
So then flipping over to the revenue side, um, you'll see that the original budget for total revenues was a hundred and forty nine and a quarter million. Um, and we ended or preliminarily ended the year at one fifty one point eight million, which is two point six million or one point seven five percent uh, over what we had budgeted. Um, so these are mostly comprised of, uh, one point seven million in, in tax collections. Uh, as well as building, uh, conveyance fees that were two hundred and ten percent of what was expected at one point two million over. And those kind of make up for some of the deficiencies in, in investment income and, and parking permits that we saw last year.
The collection rate for taxes was running at ninety nine point seven or was not running, was ninety nine point seven for twenty two.
What was it the year prior?
I want to say ninety nine point eight.
Okay.
By, if, um, I asked her why she was slacking that.
You know.
So we had budgeted for a fund balance drawdown of five point two six, and we actually drew, drew, drew down only one point nine six.
Yep.
Other questions?
Anything else?
Let's just, I'm sorry. I had one more question. Just on the January supplemental tax collection, it's always, I never quite understand why that number never changes. Did we really collect six hundred and twenty five thousand?
So no, uh, last, uh, I think in FY twenty two, we had collected, it's down here, something like eight hundred or, or nine hundred thousand, I believe. Um, at the bottom, tho- those are really just fixed numbers from the bu- like from the budget itself when it was put together. Um, I believe that falls into tax collections current. So at the top of, of the, uh, of the list.
You mean anything over the six twenty five goes into the current or something?
I think the higher six twenty five, but it wa- it was really, I think, closer to eight hundred, nine hundred thousand last year. That is all shown in the currents.
Six hundred and twenty five is just a placeholder from the budget perspective when doing the mill rate calculation down below with the groundless. So you know, you, you never know what you're going to get on the supplemental. And obviously last year and the year before would have been high because of so many people moving into town from, um, during COVID, so they spiked, um. But typically it's been around this number other than the past couple of years. And this is just the placeholder.
Yeah. So when you're looking at this, the, the top half is really the, all of the revenues and the first bold is the total for all of those below that are mostly either fund balances or, or kind of informational numbers.
And the cars appreciated as opposed to depreciated, um, last year significantly.
So this is just motor vehicle?
Yeah, yeah. The supplement, um, from, um, older car, not new cars, um, used cars.
Mm-hmm.
They appreciated.
Anything further?
So the, you know, the, the, the big outliers, obviously on the rev side or permits, parking permits and fees and tickets.
There's, uh, tipping fees. We did actually just get, um, an accrual that's going to go in there of about a hundred, a hundred and thirty thousand.
So that's going to change.
Yeah, that's going to change. Yeah.
Okay.
So there are those type of entries. I'm going through everything to, to tune up.
Right.
You were asking about parking.
Parking, now parking's good, uh, tipping fees. And then, um, I guess it's investment income, I think. I don't have a.
Yeah, that's investment income.
That's the down one point four, yeah.
Yeah. And that's just because market conditions is.
The rates that, some of the, um, investments have been moved into other, you know, we just put another ten thousand or the treasure, just put another ten thousand.
Oh, we look, sorry. So we're liquid now.
Yeah, to try and get because of the treasury rates and things like that and to pick up, um, some of the money market rates have increased, you know? Um, this time last year or June of twenty one or so, they were running at point three, five, if I remember, like our bankwell investment. Um, they're now, you know, in the, close to two. So, um, they're changing, we're, we're getting some return.
I mean, clearly we're in market, you know, incredible market fluctuations. So that's, that's, I guess it's understandable. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Full-time employees, Cheryl and John, good morning again.
Okay, first one is for, um, it's actually listed as Park and Recreation. It's actually just recreation. Um, so for the agenda, it would be the Assistant Director of Recreation. And this is Zach Alapis. Um, from two thousand sixteen to the present, he has worked for the town of Seymour. Um, he has been their Park and Rec Program Manager. He, uh, has a BS in Health Promotion Studies and Wellness Management. He has been a baseball coach for Notre Dame High School. Um, in Shelton, he worked for Special Olympics, uh, flag football coach. His references were amazing. Um, we did have seventy applications, interviewed ten, and then for the, uh, next four applicants, we had asked them to put together what, where they saw Park and Rec going in the next six months. And his presentation was, was remarkable. So we would like to, um, see Zach come on full-time as our Assistant Director of.
Seventy applicants is a pretty good, uh, I said, pretty, pretty, pretty large pool of, uh, potential candidates.
Yes.
A lot of qualified people, yes.
Have you completed your, um, in terms of any openings that you have? Are you done in terms of your recreation department?
In terms of recreation, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we have two openings in the Parks Department right now.
Two openings in Park, okay.
Which we're interviewing Thursday.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
Should we vote on this separately? I guess.
Sure.
Or, okay.
Probably.
I think it's appropriate, yeah.
Any further questions?
But two different Zach.
We'll call him Zach.
Zach.
I mean, we approve the request from you as a resources director to hire Zachary Philippus, Philippus. As Assistant Director of Recreation as described by John and Cheryl.
Second here.
Further discussion, all favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right.
And then Chris for IT Operations.
Okay, we would like to present Victor Amaral. Uh, he is currently with the Board of, uh, with the New Canaan High School, with the New Canaan Board of Ed. Um, as the Assistant Network Manager. He's been there since two thousand nineteen. From fourteen to eighteen, he worked for the Connecticut Business Systems. He received his bachelor's degree in information and technology. Um, he works on with software, hardware, Mac and Windows systems and wireless networking. Again, for this, we had eighteen applications. Um, we interviewed four and we had two come back for final. Chris had put them through, um, some IT uh, quizzes, tests, and, uh, this guy rose right to the top. So we would like to recommend Victor to come on as full-time as, um, IT Operations Manager.
And we've had a, um, how many months, months has it been since we've had the open?
Yeah, about a month and a half.
It seemed longer, but, uh.
Yeah.
This is replacing Tim's position or promoted Sal and so he will go under Sal.
It'll be the third seed in the, in the room.
And he's, they're doing a lot of what we're doing now. So to bring him into this role is a great fit for us. We want him to do all the training. That was expected.
So now there's an opening over in Board of Ed, right?
There will be.
We're po- we're poaching from the.
We didn't, she applied.
Put it out there, right?
We don't poach.
Well, it's nice to see that, yeah, folks that, that serve the town.
They want to stay down. Yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good sign.
I think it's, it's a really good fit for the networking end of it so that we can, he'll still.
He understands.
Familiar with the board of bed.
Absolutely. That's a huge, that's a huge up in my mind.
It's a great fit.
Now for the questions, I move, we approve the request from you resources to hire Victor Amaral as IT Operations Manager as described by Chris and Cheryl.
Second.
Uh, for the discussion.
None here.
All favor, hi, that's you, Adams. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have a, um, someone on Zoom here.
And.
Um, thanks, Chris. So as you know, we, um, advertised for a, uh, grant writer. Cheryl, why don't you describe? So, um, we've made an offer to someone on the Zoom here.
Uh, so I did send you the, um, resume last night. It's for Greg Riley. He currently works in Stratford as their grant writer from two thousand twenty to the present. Um, all of you are very familiar with Greg. He worked for Hearst Media from two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen. Um, he will come in as the grant writer. He will be in the finance department under Ann. Um, this all started with Health and Human Services, kind of putting it out there that they were looking to see that the town got a. To see that the town got a grant writer and um. We kind of took it from there, there's a lot of grants out there that we haven't applied for, that we are eligible for, and so we are hoping with. Greg's assistance that we will be able to um open up some of those doors and apply for some of those grants. So.
That's great. Greg is well-known to all of us. Hi, Greg.
Hi Kathleen, hi Kevin.
Hey Greg, how are you?
Well, thanks.
So the opportunity for for uh this grant writer position, I understand that you do that currently, are you doing that in in Stratford or?
Yes, yes, full-time uh in the town of Stratford, um and I've been with them for two and a half years. And happy to report good success, uh so I, I think, I think the short. Story is that we we have learned here that. The skills of a journalist apply very nicely to those needed for grant writing, which. I need to um. Need to gather information, I need to work with department heads and find out the details about projects for which we seek funding. And then I need to, you know, present it accurately and clearly, and that's kind of the nutshell, so it's it's about. Being aware of opportunities, being aware of projects, and then aligning the two, making a uh a good story.
It helps that you know so many of us here in town that you're, that that's not a. Big hill to climb initially, so.
I I agree, I agree, I think that's good for both of us, you know me and I know, you know, you and many department heads. I think that will help.
And then just, and so this, he'll be reporting to you, is that the idea? And did you have grant writers at Wilton as well?
Uh, we did not.
Did not, okay. But you're supportive of the idea of having, yeah, yeah, I think we had talked about it at our last meeting, whenever we voted in a position that we. Anticipate, Greg, that you'll pay for yourself and then some.
I better, yes.
Now, we discovered that uh that there's a lot of grants that we don't get, so because we don't have the time, the bodies to. Uh dedicate to write grant applications, some are competitive, some are just there for the asking, um, we get very few grants from the state and fewer from the federal government. Um, so uh, there's plenty of opportunity here, um and. Having two and a half years' experience, um Greg knows how to do this. And uh, you know, we actually started consulting with Greg maybe a month ago. About what grant writers do, because we knew he did this and uh, we got very few uh. Applications in response to our advertisement, and so we're very thrilled to go with someone who's seasoned and can get the job done. And um, we look forward to having Greg be part of the the Canaan uh family, so. Greg hasn't told his employer yet, that's why we've been a little bit quiet about.
Well, it hasn't been approved yet.
That's right.
That's right, so let's go quickly before so he can make a phone call. Um, I move. Uh, for the questions?
No.
I move, we approve the hire of uh Greg Riley as our grant writer, as discussed by Cheryl and Ian.
Second here.
For the discussion, all favor? Unanimous, Greg.
Welcome aboard.
All right, I think you you'll tell us when your start date is.
Some, probably the twenty fourth is what we're looking at.
Okay, will you be working in the in the building?
Yes.
Yes, sir, yes.
Be in in finance, okay.
In finance.
Yes.
All right, great, great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right.
While we, while we have Cheryl and Anna up here, I just, I I was interested. Um, hearing John say that there's still two openings in the Parks Department, I was wondering if you can, perhaps the next meeting or thereafter. Give us a sense for how many openings we have, you know, has there been any change? I, we're all dealing with, you know, labor shortages in just about every industry, and I don't know how that has impacted the municipal. Industry, so.
I mean, I can talk a little bit about it, or I can.
We we get duh scores of applications for every position, so.
Right, we currently have um internal control open, two in Parks and Rec, a sanitarian position open and one in police currently. Um, and in the past, we have filled one in planning and zoning, two in finance. Just now, the grant writer, the park and rec assistant, and the IT operations manager.
And Cheryl, in the last year or two or so, and and putting covid aside, how does that compare? How does this turnover rate?
We have definitely seen a higher turnover, I think, um, I don't think I know commuting is a big part in it. Um, a lot of towns are looking at going to forty weeks flexibility, and so I know we're talking a little bit about that. Um, but I think the commuting has been the biggest, we're losing a sanitarian to closer to home. Um, we lost somebody in IT to go into a full remote.
Yeah, we're doing more than talking about it, we actually changed permanently the town hall hours on Friday.
Correct.
And uh, and we we welcome flexibility like.
Do that when I showed up on Friday and, I bet, well, I have a key to get in. I have a key to get in, but there are actually five people who showed up after one, after one thirty, and they were like, damn, I was closed on Friday.
You know, Darien closes on Friday and uh.
So I I'm glad, actually, that it came up for me to actually remember to say that, because that gives, I mean, I just, I had to come over and grab something. Um, and there were, there was a woman who was waiting to get in, and I'm, I said, I I can let you in, but. You can't do what you need to do, because no, yeah, it's down, it was closed, and literally, as we were walking out. With three or four other people came up.
There are six communities around us that are actually closed on Fridays, um, so we are seeing that.
Good to get that out there.
Yeah, we are not closed, and we're open until.
Yeah, I had lunch last week with the first luck of Darien, and she and she gets a lot of flack from her residents about being closed on Friday. Well, no, but again, it's 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 huge, especially for the tradespeople, they have to come in and get permits and stuff, I mean, you you, closing on Friday is. Kind of crazy, in my view, um, but, you know, that's that's the pressure we're getting from people that.
I understand, yeah, I do, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, we're making Kevin Carl stay till the very end here, but we have one more item, Kevin, before we get to you. Meeting schedule for next year, this shouldn't take long, um, we.
Is that we have a three PM start on January seventeenth, all meetings are starting at eight thirty, but we have a three PM start on the seventeenth to accommodate schedules for you all.
Sounds good, didn't we, didn't we last year with budget season discover we needed an extra meeting?
I added that.
And we added that back in?
Yeah. I added three meetings in June as well.
Right.
It's easier to schedule a meeting and cancel it.
Easier to cancel it, right?
Yeah.
So.
It's gonna be a combination of in-person and hy- hybrid.
Hybrid.
Yeah, all, okay, because some of those I'm gonna have to do from away, okay.
I move, approve the schedule um for the two thousand twenty-three calendar year as uh on our calendar, on our pu- on our tablets. Second.
I'll second.
Through the discussion, all favor? Unanimous, now we get to the Parking Commission appointment of Kevin Carl, Kevin, why don't you come up? So Laura Bud, our. Exempl- exemplary uh. Chamber of Commerce Executive Director unfortunately moved out of town, everybody's moving just over the line into Norwalk, for writing places that. Make them ineligible to serve on boards and commissions, um, we've lost. A couple other people to moves, which is unfortunate, but Kevin, um, the member of the Carl family, uh, Steve's son.
Yep.
And we thought um Parking Commission is a good place to start with government service, and I think the Carol family is a very important. Family in our town, and we thought Kevin would be a good person to add and begin to uh get involved with town government, so. It would know, I don't know, everyone knows Kevin, but um. Uh, you've seen his his uh CV and uh. I'm pleased to nominate Kevin for the Parking Commission for a three-year term ending December one twenty-two, and presumably will. Roll you over for a new term in December. Um, any questions for Kevin?
Yeah, Kevin, it was a pleasure to speak with you yesterday, and just to get the current update, I think I met you years ago. But the interesting thing is that your dad started uh his uh service in the town, but in the same position, in on the parking commission. So uh, so that's terrific and and glad you can join us. Uh, you did ask a question, you're not the only one um who's asked questions in terms of, you know, new new uh. Board members coming on board, just to have, is there some sort of guidebook, if you will, in terms of the role. Uh, in in any of the commissions and boards and so forth, and so we want to work on that too. Um, and so I think that's a great start, so thanks, Kevin, and I know that you've been watching all of the um. One of the wonderful things about having uh hybrid uh. Meetings is that you can go back and watch all of the ones previously, and I know he's been doing that as well, so. Right. So it's good to have a future, potential future Chairman of the Town Council. High expectation.
I build the bench, uh, I also wanted to mention Laura, you know, uh, was, uh, did a great job on parking, she remains a member of TDAC, because that's a committee and not a. Board or commission, so doesn't require residency. Um, but anyway, um, so I would move that we approve uh. The appointment of Kevin as described.
So delighted to second.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service in advance. That brings us to contracts under ten thousand dollars, any questions about the contracts?
Oh.
I know that I haven't signed the PAL agreement yet, um, I expected invoices, but I. Um. And I haven't signed the thirty-nine locust leash yet, but I will do that, I think, next day or two.
Just, I guess I just said one, and I have already spoken to uh Tiger about this, but just a, just a note that we are doing some um. Landscaping, plantings and so forth over at Vine Cottage, so I think that look there. And uh, I think that, that wrap up, is there any other items in terms of, you know, we did the outside painting, we're doing these plantings? Anything else on? But by the way, Vine looks great, the paint, the paint job. Fantastic job. Yes, thank you for that.
Thank you, the uh, yeah, so we painted the building, uh installed some landscaping. Uh, Todd and John just gave a quote for some irrigation work, some drip irrigation work that we'll be performing, and then. A new sign Kevin signed um. Yesterday, so you'll see that in your tablets, I did, I gave it to Pam yesterday, but it was late for this one, so you'll see that, uh, so a new sign will go up uh. To replace the old sign.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on contracts?
No.
Tax overpayments is a bunch of automobile. Overpayments there and uh. On our tablets, we approve the uh.
Second.
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 All favor, right? That unanimous, that brings us to the end of the agenda, except for Selectman's comments, I would. Uh, mentioned the covid, um, our clinics for boosters continue. As I previously described on Thursday, says the email is on the website weekly for people to sign up, there's also opportunities to get. Boosters in local um pharmacies at CVS and uh Walgreens, I believe by appointment. My wife told me that the uh New Canaan Pharmacy will give you uh boosters before nine AM on a walk-in basis, so. Um, and tomorrow, I think the uh Wavina Care Center is gonna record a PSA on uh. On vaccinations and approvals and and uh, we support that effort to remind people to continue to get. Vaccinated or boosted for uh for covid, which continues to pop up. Um, daily, it's um. Fortunately, not enough to inhibit operations, but uh. Um, otherwise, on the cell tower for the west side of town, um, I copied you or sent you a. Copy of a reply I I gave to a resident over in, and uh. At the name of the street. But Vanessa um had written to me and um. Uh, actually, she went into the town council and uh, but I get all the communications from the town council as an executive member, I think it deserved a reply. An explanation, so uh, that deals with the Utilities Commission issue, which um. I think I've stayed in my position uh there. Um, otherwise, the town attorney has been talking to the attorney for Homewood Towers and Verizon on the procedure. Uh, to to follow, um. The town attorney has been talking to John Goodwin about P and Z's role, and um, if you look at that. Hearing, public hearing they had in April of two thousand sixteen, now. What was it, two thousand sixteen? Two thousand eighteen. You know, P and Z definitely wants to have a role in the citing of uh cell towers, and um, when it comes to. Carriers, um, it's pretty clear that the Siding Council has exclusive jurisdiction. They um, they they uh adopted regulations that um. Provide for them to have a role, and they should have a role as a land use body in town to uh to decide on locations. So John is um, working that issue with the town attorney. Um, that, uh, yesterday, there was a discussion about possibly having a public hearing, public meeting on Monday, uh, October twenty-fourth. As a special meeting on the subject alone. Uh, they have a jurisdiction under section eight twenty-four of the Connecticut statutes. To issue a report to the town bodies on on uh any lease of town property, so that seems to be the appropriate place to start.
So there would be a recommendation, correct?
They have, they have.
In a form of recommendation.
And and they they have to give a report, if they issue a negative report, the town council has statutory authority to overrule that, but uh, that's kind of unusual. Otherwise, the P and Z does, doesn't have an appeal process uh to another town body. Um, obviously, the town council, under the Bach Amendment, has to approve any construction on a on a town property. And they have to have a public hearing under uh Connecticut statutes on any lease of town property. Um. And then uh, this body has to uh, in due course, um, agree to terms of a lease, once we know what the location is, we can't really do a lease without knowing where. Where a location is, so um, that's to me the status of the self. Cell matter and um, I encourage you to talk to Ira if you wish to.
Okay.
I I was gonna, I issue a memo, I believe, so he's working on a memo.
Right. I just had a couple of things, I just want on on the clinics uh for, does that also include flu, or is it just for covid?
We have, we're doing a flu for seniors kind of uh.
Okay.
And uh, but we're not doing, Jen is not doing flu at the same time as the.
She's not, okay, okay, great, thanks. On um, two things on the Utilities Commission, um, I I did see your uh email back to uh that individual. But I think we're we've gotten a number of emails of people um inquiring about the Utilities Commission, it's covered in the media. And I think whatever your position is on that, maybe you want to think about making that more broadly available, so people, because there's, there's more than just one individual asking about that. Um, and you know where our position is in terms of uh supporting uh a reinstitution of the Utilities Commission, but I think your position. Which I read, um, should be um, shared more broadly, so people, because the question keeps coming up, so. I I agree with that, Kathleen, I mean, and Kevin, I think it's, you know, fairness to you, I think, if you were to. You know, make that public, it would at least tell people, kind of give a, give a history of.
I'm sure.
Utilities Commission.
I'm sure it'll be public within minutes, so.
Okay, so that's on the Utility Commission regarding um the cell coverage. I was actually really interested to hearing at the P and Z meeting, um, I think it was, might have been Verizon.
Thirty-nine locust.
Locust, excuse me, uh, on locust, uh, that they're putting in sort of new micro.
They have nine, nine and ten is there now, and they're replacing those and adding three more, and I had asked the uh tech council for uh. Verizon, who we've worked with for ten years now, going back to the Puddin Hill fiasco. Um, uh, whether there's any five G service Verizon in town now, and there's none. So I I don't know whether the same is, I'm I'm gonna confirm with AT and T, because the wave in the antennas may be five G in uh. But the thing about five G, people have to understand, five G signals don't go very far, so.
Exactly my point, that that's really good information that I think should be shared more publicly, um. As I said, I learned about this um locust from P and Z. This type of information, just in terms of what, how broadly uh the coverage is in our town. Just dealing with the West Cell Tower proposal for P and Z in terms of location.
Yeah, I I I anticipate Verizon will will testify, uh, speak at the uh P and Z process, because coverage is is clear, part of the things that. P and Z cares about.
And so I think that kind of information more broadly in terms of how uh cell services provided in our town. Which would not be necessarily covered with just a P and Z meeting, just a Board of Select meeting, just a uh. Potentially a town council meeting, a public information forum is what I think everybody benefits from. Yeah. Especially understanding, you know, where cell coverage is in town, what is our current uh plan. And uh, and hearing, you know, multiple different uh views on the subject, I think is worthwhile. Oftentimes, when it's either before the Board of Selectmen or or the P and Z, there's, it's just people coming up and. Saying something or asking a question, but there's not an ongoing dialogue.
Well, keep my, you know, I view that as something that laypeople can't have a professional opinion on, there's actually the RF. RF engineers have to actually measure.
But they can have a view.
That's why we, well, they can have a view, but you know, when people up on Soundview Lane say I I had coverage before. And actually, you said West School. I was over at West School the other day. You know, I get zero coverage from.
What do you?
I I.
It's all about.
I get, I get a half bar from Verizon.
I have eighteen and I got five G over there.
I had five G two with eighteen.
Well, okay, I'll verify where you think you're getting a five G signal from.
Okay.
Well, that's it, that's what maybe the experts can do. That's what we're asking for.
Exactly, exactly, because it surprised me actually that Verizon said there's no five G service in the canyon.
So let me be clear, you're you're gonna get Ira to issue.
Yeah.
A memo, a memo that sets out what you want him to say in terms of P and Z process, et cetera, et cetera.
John had questions and John talked to.
Okay, I I I'm happy to talk to John.
Because they have a legitimate role.
No doubt.
And that is probably correct and I have no problem with that. I mean, I stand by my statement that I made earlier with respect to our role. Ultimately, we approve or disapprove a lease. Getting to the process, so you're saying that with respect to public input, this would be done exclusively through P and Z and or.
Oh, no, keep, the process is to town council has to have a public hearing. So we're gonna have at least P and Z have a public meeting. Public have input to their decision, their their decision, they decide.
Right.
Right, they're gonna have to issue a report saying this is what we prefer.
Are they issuing the report before or after the public hearing?
How could they possibly issue a report before the public?
Well, so.
Never know when you.
Kind of communication is involved where the the public is hearing, you know, what's what's.
They normally make a decision after, you know, normally they don't have public hearings on eight twenty fours.
And on the.
It's unusual and it's.
Hearing is just one-way flow or are they responding to what the public is asking?
Well, the the witnesses, Verizon and Homeland Towers can answer questions, I mean.
Okay, so they can answer questions from the public?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But again, so that's one opportunity. Town Council has another opportunity. We can have a public hearing if we want to as Board of Selectmen. Then, when it gets to the siding council, before the siding council application can be filed, there's a ninety-day information session period for the and P and Z can has another opportunity to to express their preference.
At the siding council.
To the siding council before the application is even filed. And then the siding council, once you have an application that's pending, has to have a public hearing in the town where the cell tower is. So there's like five opportunities for public areas coming up in the next six months. And good, I think, you know, the the critical thing is, I mean, you, when I rest, when I watched that replay of the the April nineteen, two thousand eighteen meeting. There was a lot of debate by planning and zoning at the time as to what the considerations for locations.
Right.
Where on somebody's property it should be and, you know, so the key, the key factor that they they they're looking for is minimally disruptive or, you know, minimally visible to. So the other thing was, I would emphasize Homeland Towers was selected on an R F P process. You know, you said at the time, it's a fantastic plan that Tom Tesla presented and prior to, prior to this new framework, we fought carriers for years. You know, every carrier who came forward with a proposal, we fought. That's why we're in the situation we are. We and when I'm with Verizon in January two thousand eighteen, they said, Kevin, you fought us for so long, you missed the boat getting coverage, right? We have zero budget for coverage. This is our budget for capacity and we are working in New York City and everywhere for capacity.
To be clear, I think you've said that there's no rush anymore because the money is still gonna be there, is that correct?
Change things because now they're not focusing on this much on New York City. Where capacity is was the real issue, right? They're focusing on the suburbs and they realize people want to be able to work from home. And you have to have, so the whole, we're not even into the four G generation yet before we get to five G. And that article I sent you this morning was fascinating. This car accident out in Nebraska where six people were killed. Someone was wearing a new iPhone fourteen watch and that watch said there was a crash and automatically called nine one one. That's safety. You know, and you know, my my G M. Car, if you get into a crash, the car automatically calls nine one one. Calls to have nine one one call. So you know, that's 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 what self-service means in terms of safety. So.
Look, you you're saying today you're open to having transparent, multiple meetings with respect to pu- public input, expert input, et cetera, et cetera. That's that's what I want to hear.
We need everyone to understand that's why we are where we are in New Canaan.
You know, because because to be honest, at some point, it seemed that we were kind of pushing this through.
In fairness, when when Ray was here in June, he said Verizon was anxious and they might not that we might lose the money.
He became less anxious.
Well, no, Verizon's, you know, said, we will take the time it takes because we made clear to the carriers and the tower companies, actually Homeland Tower has the exclusive right on town property and right of way. But we made clear to the carriers, we have a process and they want, if you work with us, we'll get towers built.
And and we just need info, we need coverage info from each carrier. We need the gaps. We need to know how many people are using, how many devices are being used. We need information, information and more information, including on R F.
You know, as I, as I mentioned, I've been working for three years to get Verizon added to the Country Club Tower. The Country Club has has signed on. Verizon has signed on.
So you're the utilities commissioner for the Country Club, too? I'm not kidding, I mean.
Well, again, it's.
So you you understand the subject and I think that's 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 great.
Well, if Tom Tesla stayed on.
Yeah.
Right, we had already, we'd already engaged Homeland Towers to execute a strategy. That strategy is they work with the carriers and and the carriers know they have to work through Homeland Towers. If they come with something that's offensive in another location, we're not gonna work with them. That's that's the whole framework.
With balloon tests, the whole nine yards. That's that's, okay, that's, you know, a sixth month process seems seems more appropriate.
Is that contract with Homeland Towers, is that in perpetuity or is that an annual contract that's renewed? How does that work?
Well, you did the, you did the master lease, but.
I'm not for selectmen. I mean, you could, you could do the, you do the R F P, you could do it for Burt and Moses. Don't, you know, you keep pointing to me.
No, but you did the the master lease with with Rob.
We did the master lease, we did the master lease.
Never signed.
But because we went to a one-off situation, but you know, I haven't seen you you keep, you know, blaming me for Homeland Towers and yet you've been working with them if you like them. I mean, I I don't know what you want me to say, Kevin.
I'm fully on board.
Like them or not like.
I'm fully on board with the homeless, the strategy Tom Tesla adopted. My only I, my only criticism at the time, it took so long, right? It took it for.
It should take time because the people have significant input and that's the whole point. You were trying to push this through. And, okay, okay. Go back and look at the. Going forward, more importantly, you have said today that you're open to having a six-month process where you have full transparency. Open meetings at P and Z Town Council and Board of Selectmen, is that correct or not?
I just said.
Thank you.
On the other hand, it came as a great surprise to me at the end of April to get an email, which I didn't see actually for the first few weeks from Ray Bogarty saying Verizon wants to do seven fifty-nine West Road and and it's a funded tower.
Great, and and so we have to rush this through.
That hasn't happened in five years.
Okay.
So that that was unbelievable news. I didn't appreciate at all. The Verizon said they had a sense of urgency until this race surprised me by saying that at our meeting back in June, so. But they backed off the sense of urgency. They want to serve the Canaan. They have a right to serve the Canaan. People have to understand, federal government said carriers have a right to buy cell service to the public and in Connecticut's case, they said the siding council makes the decisions for every town and city in 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 Connecticut. So but it helps us to work with the carriers to get what we need in a way that's respectful of people's sensibilities. And to me, it's not a political question, as you have referred to it, it's a it's a safety question and becoming a modern, a modern town, so.
So I'm sorry, just if you wouldn't mind just helping us clarify. So Homeland Towers is a lease agreement that we have with them that is renewed every year or how long is the contract with Homeland Towers?
Again, I didn't do the contract, it was done.
I know, but what is it say on the contract?
It says we're gonna apparently do case by case rather than a master lease where they.
Case, but they even, so they just did, for instance, the one up on Soundview. Were they involved in the Soundview?
Oh, yeah, they.
Cell Tower, so they they were engaged in that, so we do it each transaction.
If my opponent's ridge started as a public safety tower, if no carrier came along, because we need public safety. So that's why we work with Homeland Towers to, we were gonna go to the siding council with a public safety tower. Regardless whether a carrier joined for cell service, because that's so important to have a permanent.
But just just to remind everybody, this is a different situation because the town of New Canaan owns this property as opposed to private property owners on Soundview, on Ponus, a different situation entirely. We, you know, we're the people contracting to.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I just had one other item, but again, lots of emails coming. We appreciate public comment and a lot coming in about affordable housing and an affordable housing committee. And you know, my position on that.
I think once, once these votes occur on the pending matters, we will then address that committee.
Votes from the.
P and Z. We have to know where we're going with the with the current proposals before we can have a strategy for the next step. We we expect to get our moratorium on November first. I think that's the ninety-day, end of the ninety-day period. If that doesn't occur, that will be a different process for for a committee.
So one of the potential processes for the committee is that there is a someone has written and sent to the Department of Housing in terms of our eight thirty G application. Attorney Hollister, and so maybe there've been others, I'm not aware, but what sort of response is the town taking or a committee in terms of how to respond to some of the objections?
Well, again, we've been told by, led to believe, I'd say, by the Housing Department that we're gonna get our moratorium.
Okay.
If that doesn't occur, that that'll be all bets off in terms of where we are and how.
But in either case, Kevin, you're supportive of of.
I've already said that, but John Goodwin, we're we're talking about standing up a committee once we know where the lay of the land is with the current eight thirty G proposals and our moratorium. If we don't get the moratorium, all bets are off.
Do we need a town council? Is this a Board of Selectment Commission or would this be a?
Only the town, only the Board of Selectment can appoint committees.
That's, that's what I thought, it should be a committee.
Why are all bets off if we don't get the moratorium? Isn't there a reason, even more of a reason for a committee to be together?
My view. You know, there's a lot in the pipeline and and I just hope Scott Hobbs hangs in there as a leader to to get this this done, so.
Okay, more on that. That's all I had, thank you.
I'm good, thanks.
I would, we'll adjourn at ten fifteen. Second, second, all in favor? Thank you. All right, have a good day, everyone.
Too.